We will now call the May 2nd Common Council Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lurk.
Here.
Ritz.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise. Pledge of allegiance.
Kim, would you start us out?
Yeah, again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Figure we put your work right away.
All right.
Item three, approval of minutes of April 18th, 2023. If everybody take a few moments to look it over. When you're satisfied, there's no errors, omissions, or discussion. Motion, please.
Marshall moves to approve the minutes of April 18th, 2023.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lurk.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item four is a mayoral proclamation for Huntington Disease Awareness Month. Kathryn, would you please read that into record?
Certainly. Mayoral proclamation Huntington Disease Awareness Month. Whereas Huntington's disease, HD, is a brain disease that is passed down in families from generation to generation. It is caused by a mistake in the DNA instructions that build our bodies and keep them running. DNA is made up of thousands of genes, and people with HD have a small error in one gene called Huntington. Over time, this error causes damage to the brain and leads to HD symptoms. And whereas HD causes deterioration in a person's physical, mental, and emotional ability, usually during their prime working years, and currently has no cure. Most people start developing symptoms during adulthood between the ages of 30 to 50. But HD can occur, can also occur in children and young adults known as juvenile HD or JHD. HD is known as a family disease because every child of a parent with HD has a 50/50 chance of inheriting the faulty gene. Today, there are approximately 41,000 symptomatic Americans and more than 200,000 at risk of inheriting the disease. And whereas every child of a parent of Huntington disease faces a 50% risk of inheriting this genetic disorder. And there is no effective treatment and no known cure yet. And whereas the Hunting Society of America has initiated and supported research into the cause and nature of this fatal disease, and the work of the society has brought new hope to the people with Huntington disease and families who bear the burden of this affliction. And whereas research continues to offer the promise of early diagnosis, treatment techniques, and ultimately a cure for Huntington disease. And whereas the month of May will be observed as Huntington Disease Awareness Month, and on May 21st, 2023, the city of Oak Creek will host to the Third Annual Guzzi's Hunt for the Cure Run Walk to benefit the Huntington's Disease Society of American Wisconsin Chapter. Whereas I, Daniel Bekavich, mayor of the city of Oak Creek, urge all of our citizens to lend their support to the Huntington Society of America in its effort to unravel not only the mystery of Huntington disease, but also a wide range of other genetic, neurological, and psychiatric disorders affecting the lives of so many. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dan Bekavich, mayor of City of Oak Creek, proclaim May 2023 as Huntington Disease Awareness Month, dated the second day of May 2023.
Thank you, Kathryn. Chris, would you like to say anything, or should I start out?
Either way.
Well, this is a very timely thing and a very personal thing here at the council as well. When, when you have a friend, colleague, family member afflicted by this, it really becomes personal. I'm really glad to see that the city of Oak Creek has stepped up to their third annual run walk to help cure this affliction. And couldn't be prouder to take part in this and declare it Huntington Disease Month. And we're going to have the hunt for the cure, and hopefully that cure is a result of what we're doing right here in Oak Creek. So I'm going to let Chris say a few words if he cares to.
Thanks, Mayor Dan. I just want to thank you for the awesome proclamation. This is going to be our third year for the race. And our last year, we raised $70,000. And the money was donated to HDSA. And we had 700 participants our first year. We raised about $90,000 and had about 1,100 participants. So in our first two years, it's exciting. What we did is we learned a lot in those first two years on how to be a better foundation. And we created a foundation, Guzzi's Hunt for a Cure Foundation, where we're going to, basically, it's going to be a grant that people can apply for so that when someone has, they're tested positive for the HD gene, you can, they can manipulate the embryos and they can, they don't take them out, but they look for the lower numbered HD numbers when they're working with creating the babies. So it's a pretty impressive schematic, and we just have, we're so thankful to be able to offer that, and that's going to be our plan going forward.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone on council, a few words, anything? As Chris said, we may not be able to eliminate the disease, but maybe we can prevent some of it going forward. But that starts at Guzzi's Walk. Getting the funding for that technology and that research, it's going to change people's lives here in the future. So please join us all at the city of Oak Creek on May the 21st down at Lake Vista Park and help us in a hunt for the cure. We will have no vote on that. That is just a mayoral proclamation. Item five, is public hearing and is consideration of conditional use permit for the next best place childcare and preschool for a conditional use permit for a private playground outdoor recreation facility at 150 West Ryan Road. Kathryn, would you properly read that?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Kathleen Smigalkowski, Next Best Place Childcare and Preschool for a conditional use permit for a private playground outdoor recreation facility on the property of 150 West Ryan Road. Applicant is Kathleen Smigalkowski, Next Best Place Childcare and Preschool. Property owner is United Auto Leasing. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is April 5th, 2023.
Doug?
Well, thank you and good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I am the Director of Community Development for the city of Oak Creek. And the first of this evening's public hearings is on a zoning conditional use of property at 150 West Ryan Road. The conditional use permit itself is for an outdoor recreation facility and private playground. The business itself is actually is a daycare center. And it's just a kind of a quirk of our code and something we may be taking a look in the future is why an outdoor playground essentially attached to a daycare center requires a conditional use permit. But that's something for another day. Proposal here before you this evening is for the Next Best Place Childcare and Preschool. Again, while the daycare portion of the proposal is permitted, the outdoor playground and recreation facility is a conditional use. The facility would accommodate up to 32 children at maximum capacity. And hours of operation would be 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There were no weekend hours specified. Up to seven employees would be at the facility. So the outdoor recreation area, and I think I've got something showing it here, thank you, would be set on the north side of the existing building, separated into two play areas surrounded by a six-foot tall chain link fence. And access to those play areas is through the building. The, again, having a playground accessory to a daycare center, certainly something which is compatible. Just given the quirk in the zoning code that requires a conditional use permit, the Plan Commission, in their review of the proposal, also felt that it was appropriate. And they have recommended to the council that the conditional use permit be granted. Some conditions and restrictions, a very basic set of conditions and restrictions. Again, talking about hours of operation, no outside storage, the very typical things that we see with any commercial development. So with that in mind, this is a public hearing. Would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for outdoor recreation facility and a private playground for the property at 150 West Ryan Road, please approach podium, give your name and address, and proceed to address the council with your questions or comments. Public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. We will make three calls. This will be the first. Second call, anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium. And third and final call, anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium, give your name and address. Okay, we will close the public hearing and go on to item six, which is consideration of approving that conditional use permit for the recreation private playground on the property at 150 West Ryan Road. Open it up to the council for questions. Greg?
Just to recap at planning, this was discussed and ultimately approved for consideration for common council. We discussed the layout a little bit. And it was supported, and the only thing that was kind of brought up was a suggestion to do some type of concrete barrier or some planter boxes along the play area that is now where the drive-through lanes used to be. So, and then other than that, it was approved.
Questions, discussions? Okay, seeing none, motion.
Ritz moves to approve a conditional use permit for an outdoor recreation facility, private playground on the property at 150 West Ryan Road.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lurk.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item seven is also a public hearing in its consideration by the Oaks Oak Creek Residents LLC to establish planned unit development on the properties at 9102, 9120, and 9140 South 27th Street. Kathryn, if you would, please.
Certainly. Public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Chandra Sikar Masarati Oak Creek Residences LLC to establish a planned unit development on the properties at 9102, 9120, 9140, South 27th Street. Applicant is Chandra Sikar Masarati Oak Creek Residences LLC. Property owner is Rajani Yopuri. Legal description there follows. Date of notice, April 5th, 2023.
Doug?
Thanks. This request is for the establishment of a residential plan unit development on the properties at 9102, 9120, 9140, South 27th Street. And the council may recall that these properties were combined by CSM and resoned to RD1, two-family residential in September of last year. Tonight's review is the next of the several reviews that will be required for this development, including but not limited to plan, plan review and condominium plat review. The PUD, which would be called Royal Estates, would include 36 single-family residences and two, two-unit, and eight four-unit townhome-style condo buildings. I think I've got a, there we go. There's the concept development plan. Each unit is proposed with four bedrooms and roughly 1,600 feet of living area and an attached two-car garage. And again, designs for those buildings would be approved by the Plan Commission as part of a site and building plan review. Just one note as part of that, though, the design, given that these are single-family attached in essence, would need a modification to allow for the garages that they're proposing since they do exceed the minimum with requirements for, for single-family detached structures. Plan Commission, the conditions and restrictions have evaluated that, and they have recommended approval of that modification request. The, it appears from the plans, and again, these are conceptual plans, as part of the general development plan, that, that all the dimensional requirements are met, including density setbacks. You'll notice that the buildings are clustered along a private roadway taking access from 27th Street, and that the units themselves are on the western end of the property, even though the property itself does go quite a ways further east towards 20th Street. But the proposal would include only development on the areas west of that wetland area, through that wetland area where there would be development of trails and detention basin, and the remainder would remain undeveloped. As with every PUD, the Plan Commission reviews, there are a set of conditions and restrictions that establish requirements for the home design, landscaping requirements, the maximum of units, building material allowances, and requirements for the review of deed restrictions, and other things. Given that this is also adjacent to a state highway, 241 South 27th Street, they'll need to access a permission and a permit from DOT for that. Again, minimum of two cars, two car garage per unit with parking on the aprons as well. It would be subject to the lighting per code, also subject to impact fees. And I mean, the review in front of the Plan Commission actually started as part of a amendment to the comprehensive plan. So this has been reviewed on several levels with the Plan Commission, and it may be the first exposure to the council for this. But it is a housing type. I mean, we don't see a lot of condominiums, you know, Creek. I think it's a, it's a, again, one of those missing types of housing typologies that fits in with the zoning and upon review by the Plan Commission. Recommendation is being, again, forwarded to your, the council for your review and approval pending the results of this public hearing. And this is a public hearing. Would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed planning and development for the properties at 9102, 9120, 9140, South 27th Street, please approach the microphone, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. This will be the first call for the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak?
Hi, Mary.
You can pull that down if you'd like.
Mary Hunt, 2537, West Hilltop Lane. I heard that some of these are going to be rental units, privately owned.
The applicant, we'll, we'll bring them up to rebuttal for themselves, so. Thank you, Mary.
While we're waiting for that, I mean, it's been represented to us that these are condominiums. That being said, the city can establish requirements of the design and, you know, square footage, things of that nature for a, for the development. Typically, the city can dictate the form of ownership.
Thank you for the clarification, Doug. We'll clear that with the applicant when we can. This will be the second call. Third and final call for the public hearing. Okay, we will close the public hearing, and we will go on to consideration of the ordinance establishing the planned unit development on the properties at 9102, 9120, and 9140, South 27th Street. I'll open it up to the council, and we'll take input from the council, and then we'll bring the applicant up. Anything?
Hi, Mayor Dan. I, one question I would have would be if we could get a contact number for somebody that we can reach out to because there are times when the property's not taken care of and maintained. And it's a laborious process because what happens is neighbors have to call the city hall to report the issues. Then the issue's reported, and then they have to send out a letter. So it's a long process. So I'm looking to see if I can get contact information for the, for the property owner and who would be taking care of their management. Because sometimes the calls are going, they vary in how often they're, quick they're returned and responded to. So I would just like to be able to help them out.
Jim?
I assume there's an HOA involved in this, then?
Can we have the applicant come up, please? We'll need your name and address, sir.
Again, typically, if it were a condo, there would be an HOA, homeowners association involved, yes.
Hi, this is Anil Yopuri, and my address is 420 Woodland Chase Lane, Vernon Hills, Illinois, 60061. Hey, good evening, everyone. And I would be happy to share my contact information. And Carrie has my contact information through the emails, and I'll be more than happy to give my contact information so that I can be reached out at any given point of time for any kind of concerns.
Thank you. Jim's question, homeowners association?
Yes, we will be establishing a HOA. And till the development is done, we will be taking care of the HOA. Once the development is completed, we'll hand over the, to the homeowners.
I brought that up, Chris, because you were talking about upkeeping a property.
Mm-hmm.
Typically, you have less of a problem with HOA.
Yes, and to your point, I agree. This is pre-structures being built or anything. There's nothing happening right now, so.
There ain't anything structured.
Got you. It's just, it's just land right now. So it's just things that are, trees that are laying there, grass not being cut or cut.
And, and sir, into the residence question, will they be rentals, or will they all be sales?
No, these will be sold to individuals as an each individual unit. And the HOA will decide how much they will rent it or not. They have to maintain their own, the tenants will occupy or the owners should occupy. But most of the aspirants will be, we are not going to keep any, I mean, the developers are not willing to keep any things. We just want to sell the whole community.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
When, when were you looking at doing work on this, in this area? Starting the neighborhood? Is it this year?
Yes, as soon as we get it to the next steps and we get the permits and we get everything cleared out, we'll start groundbreaking it. And we'll eventually update the council and the Plan Commission whenever we start doing that.
Thank you.
Anything further from council?
Sorry.
Yes.
I don't know if we've actually, I've been a council approved, actually, condominium development. So I'm not sure. Grounds maintenance and stuff like that is typically handled by a development company, condo association?
It's privately done by the HOA. So plowing, garbage pickup.
Because some common areas, too, they're probably all the maintenance, but.
Be along 27th Street. And again, that's private property, so that's up to them to maintain.
Great, so that's part of the, whenever they set up the condo association or homeowners association?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's no further discussions or questions. Motion, please.
Guzekowski will make a motion that the common, that the common council adopts ordinance number 3071, an ordinance to establish planned unit development, PUD, on the properties at 9102, 9120, 9140, South 27th Street.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
Item nine is consideration of a request by CR Devco for an amendment to Section 8, time of compliance of an existing planned unit development affecting portions of property at 2231 West Putes, 8843 South 13th, and 8950 South 20th. Kathryn, when you're ready?
Certainly. Public hearing number three is to consider a request submitted by Ryan Swing Ruber, CR Devco LLC, for an amendment to Section 8, time of compliance of the existing planned unit development affecting portions of the properties at 2231 West Putes Road, 8843 South 13th Street, and 8950 South 20th Street. Applicant is Ryan Swing Ruber, CR Devco LLC. Property owner is CCR Hersbrock II Limited Partnership and WRE Hersbrock III Limited Partnership. There follows the legal description of the PUD. Date of notice is April 5th, 2023.
Doug?
Thanks. In May of last year, the applicant, with the support of the current property owners, requested approval of resondings and a planned unit development for portions of the properties that the city clerk just read into the record. And this request was ultimately approved by the common council, conditions and restrictions, which allow, allow the developers and new property owners to proceed towards due diligence, which has taken a little bit longer than they had expected. And in fact, they've been going through this. In fact, they do have their, as of last Plan Commission meeting, they have had their plans reviewed and approved by the Plan Commission. That given the time of compliance provision in the current ordinance, they felt that they would be out of, out of compliance at some point during their construction, and they did not want that happen. Therefore, they are mending the PUD to provide additional 18 months' time of compliance for this planning development. Again, it's, the development, the plans for this development actually were approved by the Plan Commission. So I think we're in, you know, in good shape as far as commencement of construction is concerned. We just wanted to clean up the language. So with that in mind, this is also a public hearing. Any questions or comments regarding the changes to the PUD for 2231 West Putes Road, 8843 South 13th Street, 8950 South 20th Street? Please approach the microphone, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is also.
Thank you, Doug. Anybody wishing to speak, this will be the first call. Second call. Third, oh, got to take her.
Good day. My name is Sharon Morris Pruitt.
Very much, put that microphone down.
I live at 8966 South 21st Street. So I didn't know about the first development. That's like right where we come in at Hilltop Lane. And now there's this other development. We've been in Oak Creek since '64, our family has. We, we live there because it's a nice suburban place. Now you're talking about 120 homes and another 36 in an area that's really not zoned for that. It's really a lot of rural ground that, where's, what's going to happen? What's going to happen to our property taxes? My taxes just went up 30,000. They went up 11,000 last year. And I made no substantial change in my structure at all just because these other areas are coming in.
That's actually not how the taxes work, but we're not really here to talk about that right now.
Right, right. But how is our school system going to handle these? Because they're all single-family homes, right? How is that going to handle it? How is our roads going to handle it? Because each of them only look like one entrance in and out on Putes Road, and then the first one on 27th Street. How's our roads going to handle that?
So unfortunately, for whatever reason, whether you're outside the zone of notification, I don't know exactly where you live in proximity to these developments, but usually you get notice if you're within 300 feet. Both these developments have been discussed through planning and neighborhood meetings for the last, I'd say, at least year, year and a half.
Right, the one on Putes Road, yeah, I knew about that one, but not this other one on 27th, right there.
The one on 27th has been coming through, and don't hold me to this, but at least from early fall that, that they looked at it. So in regards to that, with schooling, the schools were built out, a 50-year build out of Oak Creek. So they figured the way families are going, they're covered. They did that, they did that study when they expanded the high school, as well as modified middle schools and grade schools. With regards to the streets, traffic engineers have figured out the patterns as to where they're going to be, how they're going to enter. Now, the one entrance, again, has to go through fire, as well as DOT on 27th Street. So they're working with 27th Street there. There is a secondary entrance into the one on Putes. So you can enter off of Putes, can also get in off of 20th in an emergency.
Emergency access.
It's just an emergency access.
Right, so I live right over there, that's...
Well, if we have to connect a street, we could do that, too. It was discussed. Okay, we were on second call. We will go to third call and final call. Okay, we will close the public hearing, and we will go on to, I believe, item 10, which will be consideration of the ordinance approving an amendment to Section 8, time of compliance for planned unit development on the properties at 2231 West Putes, and 8843 South 13th, and 8950 South 20th. Oh. What you got there? Oh.
I want to give that.
You can give it to Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, concerning item 10, Greg?
So again, this was discussed in length at planning. One thing of interest or note, just to discuss, while it doesn't directly relate to the lots that are being developed for this PUD, um, lot three, which is the, the narrow east-west lot behind many of the residential properties, uh, the developer did state that they were going to dedicate that as, um, a natural park or an environmental conservancy. They, they have zero plans on developing that in the future, and they were going to leave that natural.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Uh, anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, motion on ten.
Is the council makes a motion that the council adopts ordinance three zero seven-two, an ordinance to approve an amendment to section eight, time of compliance of the planned unit development on the properties at twenty-two thirty-one West Putes, eighty-eight forty-three South Thirteenth Street and eighty-nine fifty South Twentieth Street.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Under old business, item eleven, um, are the mayoral aldermatic appointments. Serving in two thousand twenty-three on small claims will be Alderman Marshall. And on the library board will be Alderman Lorick. We need no vote, no motion on that. Uh, in item twelve, we will need motions for the following mayoral aldermatic appointments. And they read as follows, tourism commission will be Alderman Ritz. In community development authority will be Alderman Gail and Alderman Kirkowski. Any discussion? Two items, one where the next. If not, we will just need a motion on twelve.
Bill moved to concur with the follow, with the mayoral aldermatic appointments as listed.
Is the council gonna second? Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And item thirteen are the common council president's aldermatic appointments, and I'd like to turn that over to President Gail.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council, uh, committee appointments are as follows, personnel and finance committee, myself, Alderman Kirkowski, Alderman Ritz, oh, I will serve as chairman on that committee. License committee, myself, Alderman Kirkowski, Alderman Ritz, Alderman Kirkowski will serve as chairman on that committee. Planning commission will be Alderman Guzakowski, Alderman Lorick. Board of health will be Alderman Marshall, emergency management will be Alderman Lorick. Parks and Recreation Commission will be Alderman Guzakowski. Board of Public Works and Capital Assets, all of, uh, myself, Alderman Guzakowski, Alderman Marshall. Uh, Guzy will serve as chairman on that committee.
There are no motions needed on that. Okay, if there's no discussion, I just wanna thank you all for, first of all, running and then putting all this time in. A lot of people don't realize the boards that are needed beyond this council meeting. Thank you all. Uh, item fourteen is new business, and it's a presentation to adopt our two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven strategic action plan. Looks like a year off, Andrew, right?
Do you think we might be able to come back to this so we can figure out the technical stuff?
Uh, without a doubt. Uh, just let me know when you're ready. We will move on to item fifteen, which is consideration, concur with the mayor's appointments or reappointments as follows. Actually, they're all reappointments, so. So item fifteen, a board of public works, capital assets is a three-year term to expire in two thousand twenty-six. As an alternate, uh, will be Fred Seepert. Uh, item B, board of review, this is a five-year term to expire in two thousand twenty-eight, April. Uh, Donald Garcia Dwyer. Uh, celebrations commission, these are three-year terms to expire in April of two thousand twenty-six. Courtney Colehouse, Kyle Colehouse, Richard Magier Junior and Tony Rooper. Then on Park and Recreation Commission, it's a three-year term, expiring four of twenty-six, Anne Byer and Leah Schreiber Johnson. Tourism commission, these are one-year terms to expire in two thousand twenty-four. Mike Grab, Melissa Rasmussen and Clint Wills. And on the Board of Zoning Appeals and Housing Board of Appeals, these are three-year terms to expire in four of twenty-six. Lawrence Bodett, Randy Gregorick. Any questions concerning the appointments or reappointments? Okay, seeing none, um, motion on fifteen, please.
Marshall will move to concur with the mayor's appointments as follows.
Ritz will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
And moving on to item sixteen, consideration of a motion to authorize the publication and write-off of the two thousand twenty-one delinquent personal property taxes as reported by the city treasurer, and we have her tonight, welcome, Sarah.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, Sarah Koschinsky, City Treasurer. I'm here tonight to request the write-off and publication of the two thousand twenty-one delinquent personal property as presented. Um, these will be published in the newspaper and on our website, and we will continue collections until the statute of limitations is reached. Um, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for Sarah, Steve?
Sarah, I just wanna take note of how small the list is this year.
And just for clarification, we're not writing these off and forgiving these debts, we're still going after them.
Correct.
They just get off our books.
Correct, yes.
Okay, any other questions for Sarah? Okay, if not, motion on sixteen.
Marshall moves to authorize the publication and write-off of the two thousand twenty-one delinquent personal property taxes reported by the city treasurer.
Lorick seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
And item seventeen is consideration of a resolution establishing the date and time of the two thousand twenty-three board of review. Catherine, any words you wanna, you wanna express?
Well, this is routine, uh, we are required to bring forward, um, our timeline and our first meeting, um, that is statutorily required for the board to meet, um, to convene. The assessment role will be, um, ready, I suppose, right after that. Um, so our first meeting will be held on Monday, May fifteenth, at two thousand twenty-three, begin at five o'clock P.M.
Any questions concerning this? Okay, seeing none, motion?
Lorick moves to adopt resolution number one-two-four-zero dash zero-five-zero-two-two-three, establishing the date and time of the two thousand twenty-three board of review.
Marshall will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Um, Andrew, are you ready for item fourteen?
Sure.
Okay, we will move back to item fourteen, and that is presentation, a possible motion to adopt two thousand twenty-seven strategic action plan. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, please allow me to kill the efficiency you, you, you've built into this meeting so far. You guys know, uh, this is something I'm personally excited about, uh, but definitely an exciting time for the council, the community and our organization. Uh, we're not gonna spend the time to go through our entire strategic plan. We will be disseminating that out to all the stakeholders and all the public. Uh, council's, uh, been provided a copy of that, but we would like to give a brief overview of the journey we've been on and then what, uh, folks can expect to see in the, the plan and, and what it does. Uh, before we get into kind of this outline, I was about, we're about one month shy of six years of our first anniversary of our first strategic action plan. Uh, we had a two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty plan and then a bridge plan from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-two. Uh, and then we instituted or, or commenced a full-blown process, uh, in spring of last year to get to the point of where we are today. So that is a long time coming and a tad bit longer than we'd hoped. Uh, but the plan did get better and better over time, and there was a ton of stakeholder input and other, uh, public input that you'll see moving forward. So very excited to be here tonight to present. Uh, just for the sake of an overview of tonight's presentation, uh, we'll talk about our journey. We'll look at slight revisions to our framework, which is the contents on the back of the wall there. Uh, we'll look at what's in the new plan and then talk about some visions and themes, just to summarize what's in the plan, uh, and then next steps in implementation for the city staff moving forward. So our process was definitely built on a very deliberate fact and information gathering phase. Uh, again, beginning with our resident priority engagement and engagement survey, which I think we initiated in April of twenty-two. Uh, and then, uh, followed that up in the summer of, uh, twenty, last summer with the employee sentiment survey. You know, really, our two biggest stakeholders are our taxpayers, and that includes residents, residents and businesses and visitors, uh, but also our employees. So we really, as you'll see moving forward, a general theme of this is really looking in, uh, to our commu, our, our resident, or, excuse me, looking externally to our residents and the services we provide and the value uh, and use of their tax dollars, uh, but also our, our workforce who, you know, actually does that work on behalf of the public and do, should, do so very well and very efficiently. Uh, we engaged the Northern Illinois University Center for Governmental Studies to help with some of the facilitation. Uh, they established focus groups and that, uh, that data is, is part of this plan. Uh, then, of course, we had previous strategic action plans, and there were very relevant yet quite unfinished initiatives, goals and aspirations that the council had, so, you know, we had to inventory those and carry some of those over. May have repackaged them up a little bit, but certainly the content, uh, and the, uh, the, the work is still in there. And then, of course, you know, the management team has priorities and needs for each department and division in the city. Uh, just general awareness, organizational awareness and resource awareness of what they need, what's challenging to, to them. Uh, and those were, uh, those data were infused in, in the planning process. And last but certainly not least, the common council and, and the leadership team held a series of workshops and conversations, uh, with NIU and then without NIU uh, to really distill all of the rich feedback from all of the stakeholders, uh, in the process to date. Uh, and it's, it was important for council to really hear from all of those constituents and come up with a plan that works for the community. So the new strategic framework, our framework is really our mission, vision, values, our critical success factors, and then the plan, the goals. Uh, not too much of a change to our vision, uh, or our mission. Uh, and however, our values, uh, as we talked about at the March thirty common council workshop, uh, we want to take a step back and really look at our organizational core values and make that a part of really some of the other initiatives in the plan, which is establishing and doubling down on our employer brand and our, uh, work culture here in the city of Oak Creek organization. So that is a goal in the plan, and we'll, of course, update the plan once our values are, uh, adopted. Uh, and then our critical success factors, so awesome new, uh, graphics for our critical success factors. These were retooled just a little bit, uh, really to be a little more inclusive and comprehensive, but our six critical success factors, which is really our filter, right? Where our rather intangible, more aspirational things like our vision and our mission become tangible, and these are the buckets, uh, that all of the initiatives and work product and, and aspirations flowed through. So we have first, active, vibrant and engaged community. Uh, financial stability and resiliency. Thoughtful growth and prosperous local economy, clean, safe and welcoming. Inspired, aligned and proactive city organization and quality infrastructure amenities and services. You can see some slight tweaks of those critical success factors in this plan, uh, versus what's on the wall, uh, what's been on the wall since about two thousand seventeen. So then getting right into the plan. So, of course, we have a very, um, good purpose statement and a background of our strategic planning journey. All of that stakeholder feedback that I mentioned to you, the, the various stakeholder groups, the common council, the, the residents, uh, the, the, the workforce here in the city. And then really, we took that through a wringer for several months. A process of distilling, categorizing, looking for like things, grouping, organizing, refining. And then we repeated that process almost ad nauseam. Uh, and that was, you know, the couple-month delay here in getting this to the, the final finish line. But it was enriching throughout that process, and your management team did just a really good job. Hours and hours of conversation of really trying to strain out and distill the essence of what those goals were and put it into a rational plan that made, made sense and flowed, uh, which really, it's just articulating a vision we have for the next several years in the city. And of course, then, uh, we put the strategic action plan document together. Uh, our communications coordinator, Leslie Flynn, did an amazing job with the graphics and the layout. Very, very professional feel, uh, to our document, and hopefully we're all proud of that. Excuse me, and then we also included a rather lengthy, uh, appendix. Uh, our appendices really were all of that, or at least in a summarized manner, all of those various instances of feedback we received. And we thought for posterity, for anybody coming in from the public to look at, w- why did, how did we come up with all this stuff? That the process was well articulated, not only in the narrative, uh, but more of the raw data was in the back of the appendices as well. So again, we're not going into the strategic plan document itself. We'll be happy to answer any questions or, or certainly converse about anything the common council members would like to. Uh, but to summarize it, what, what I pulled out and what the management had pulled out and discussed over the last couple, uh, months is really in this, there's some visions and themes that emerge. And one of those is, is show your work, a show your work mantra. We do exceptional work around, uh, the city. We, we have exceptional people behind that work. Uh, and we really need to not only demonstrate the value of those services to our public, uh, but also the employees behind them. And while we're really good at doing the work, there's, there's actually not enough time to sit back and tell everybody about the work that we did. So we really are putting in an apparatus, and this really goes to the second, uh, bullet point as well, really putting in a communication apparatus to help us show our work, because there's a continuum there. We are able to, as you'll see in the plan, demonstrate our value to the public for their tax dollar. We're able to also, in doing so, recognize our employees. Uh, when we're doing all of the above, we're promoting our community. We can do that internally and externally, uh, to the outside world. So really, it's reemphasizing, really mean, meaning reemphasize the OC brand and public relations strategies that come along with the overall concept of, uh, community promotion. And not only in the plan, you'll see, hey, we're building out the, the communications and public relations apparatus. We're looking at tourism capacity, uh, we're looking at a lot of capacity in, in many ways. Uh, but this is really one of those that tie, is, it's the tie that binds. If, if we're doing all of this good work and only our departments or, or hopefully our council knows about it, that's not a big enough audience considering the quality of the work or the new cool thing or initiative, uh, that we've been able to accomplish. Uh, this commu, this strategic plan contains not only big community aspirations, we have some big projects in here. Uh, some, some, some big problems to solve, but it's also an emphasis on being a great employer. Because we can't do a lot of those things without the people behind the work here in the city of Oak Creek. We cannot, uh, continue to do more, uh, without those people. But with that said, and to really wrap, wrap up my part, uh, before the Q and A, we, going back to having some really big projects, some really big problems to solve, a really big vision that this council has for the community, we really need, and you'll see in the strategic plan, uh, we really need to build up and organize or reorganize some resources we have in our, uh, in our organization to achieve this vision. We've, we've been running around in a, in a very, at a very frenetic pace in the city of Oak Creek, staff level, council level for, for many years now. And while we have a lot of lofty goals and a really grand vision, I think we need to address some stress points in the organization in order, and, and add resources in various ways in the organization to really get after and execute on this plan. So I know we all know that, um, you're not the audience for that, it's, it's more for the folks, uh, in the organization, but, uh, we do need to, we, we cannot be under the illusion that the, the existing staff that we have here can tackle all the cool things we wanna do. So next steps, really quickly, of course, distribute it to everybody that participated, the general public, all the boards, committees and commissions will receive a copy of this, uh, new, new plan if it's adopted. Uh, we will then, as a management team, develop an internal implementation matrix where, you know, we kind of, what's the precise implementation of this, uh, of this SAP and a newer reporting tool. We're, we're not quite sure what the look and feel of that will be, but, uh, if, if you all recall, the, the last reporting tool was, was very narrative-based, uh, and it got very onerous and very long and probably. very onerous and very long and probably very difficult to get through at times, and that continued to grow. Now we have a five-year plan, we need to find a better way, a snapshot, a dashboard to provide the council and, and other stakeholders an update. We will establish a frequency with the council for those updates, and as we talked about at our workshops, you know, this is a, this is a rolling plan. So we will inventory this with the council probably before our budget deliberations in the fall every year, really make sure that if there's something that's on the plan, let's, let's talk about it and, and make sure it's on the plan if it's a priority, a consensus priority for the elected officials. And also then talk about what, what, what has to come off or what resources we need to do, because one thing we need to make sure we, we do not do is just keep adding to this every year. We gotta make sure stuff comes off or just have a general re-prioritization discussion every year with the council. And then our next immediate steps, really are to continue implementing the plan and executing on your vision for this community. We've obviously been headlong into many of these initiatives already, so we're not starting at the, the starting line, so to speak. We've been working on these items, especially the ones that carried over from the previous plans, but really excited to, to present on behalf of the management team. And, you know, the, the document came together really well. We took our time on it. It is a five-year plan, so it should have been a deliberate process. And I just want to thank the, the common council for hanging in there through the process and, and their participation and their guidance and, and the management team and all of the stakeholders that were involved in this process to get it to where we are today, and, and that's a workable plan that, that really, I think, can, can advance this community very, very rapidly toward the vision that you have for it. Thank you.
Questions, comments for Andrew? Steve?
This, this, this just might be echoing what An- Andrew said, but from an alderman's point of view, this was, this is quite a massive undertaking over a long period of time, and just the amount of people that were involved in putting this together. And we had that workshop, we had just a lot of people coming together to get this thing printed and approved tonight, so I just want to thank Andrew for the hard work that he and everybody put into it.
Um, yeah, I agree. I appreciate all the work that went into this, and I, I really appreciate all the, kind of the data points that are outlined in here. For, from, again, from an alderman's point of view, it really helps when discussing certain things with residents that, that call with concerns or questions and oftentimes, many people think that everybody thinks the way that they think, so this is, is good to kind of show that the majority of the city with regard to certain wants or needs within the city think a certain way to kind of, to show it to some people. So, thank you.
I know you weren't through here for the entire process, but anything?
Well, historically, entities that plan do better than those that don't. So, go there. And then those that measure against plan do even better. So it'll be, as, as we move along, seeing measurements against some of our planned goals will be critical, I think.
Pass my thanks on to the staff. I know this was a massive undertaking, so staff, thank you, if anybody's watching from home, which I know you all are.
Ann?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Andrew and some of you folks in this room, I know, have spent a ton of time on this process, so you really appreciate that. Michael, I know you're hiding back there, but I know you're part of that. Really, you know, a little more probably labor intensive than it was imagined when we first started this process a while ago, but really, the effort and the product has made it worthwhile. Really just appreciate that, the, the effort that went into the whole process. You know, it really, and, you know, prodding and controlling the council here to actually, you know, think hard and long about what folks in the community elected us and trusted us to manage on their behalf. I think it's useful to go through a process every once in a while that we really have to think harder about why, in fact, we're here and what we're here and what we bring to the community. So I appreciate you actually pushing us through that process and, and having stuff percolate up and prioritizing what really is important in, in that whole work and the fact that, you know, the organization, which really probably wasn't part of the, the last thought process in terms of, you know, it was, I think the last cycle was more community oriented. This has struck a good balance in community priorities, community goals, community aspirations, along with what's going on inside the building, the folks who work here, how, how that all melds and how, you know, we're well aware of the fact that we have pushed you folks There's a lot of stuff out there that has happened because of stuff, you know, votes on, but it didn't happen unless you guys actually acted on it. So that is, goes without saying that the fact that it's recognized in this, in this strategic action plan, I think is, is a good thing for the community to see as well that the fact that what they want to happen in the community is not going to happen unless people here are prioritized and taken care of and thought about it and that whole process. Really was remarkable. I think we've got a great product to guide the community for the next five years, and it's been great to be part of that process.
Chris?
I agree with everyone's comments. Thank you.
Excellent. Just to kind of sum it up very quickly, I do agree with, with Jim. Get out and about around the county and we have different meetings with other entities, and they always remark how remarkable Oak Creek's been over the last ten years or so. It's very much changed. Change has been positive and a lot of it's gone with the strategic plan as to what was laid out years ago in the first plan. And we stuck to it, the people here were diligent. Alderman Gale kind of pointed to it, it was the people here that stuck to that mission, those values, and our vision as to where we want it to be with a lot of community input. This one, I really have to commend everybody because we looked inward and we looked at a lot of our faults, actually, as a city, whether in terms of all the things we did, and we're trying to make those corrections going forward. And this is a living, breathing document. As Andrew said, it will be looked at year to year, time to time, as things and conditions change. But for the most part, it lays it out for us, whether I'm here or any of these elders are here, that, that really helps, as Alderman Lark said, helps guide you in what you're doing and keeping an eye on where you're going. So, that, Andrew?
Sorry, I meant to give you the last word, Mayor, but I jogged my memory on something. You know, one of the things we, we appreciate as a, as a professional staff is the very well-defined roles and the functionality we have, the really good working relationship we have with you elected officials. It's, it's not a healthy dynamic everywhere, and by and large, the communities do, that do not maintain those roles and do not maintain that healthy dynamic are far behind those that do. And so, thank you for entrusting us to, to execute on your vision. We all have a role to play in this community advancing forward, and, and really, it starts with the, the culture that you create and, and the expectations that you lay down and just having this be a very positive environment to get stuff done. So, thank you for that.
Any further comments on the strategic plan before I ask for a motion?
Is anything to offer or any comments when I head into the process?
He's talked out. Okay. With that, I'll ask for a motion, please.
Marshall will move to adopt the 2023-2027 Strategic Action Plan.
Mark seconds. Hold call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lark?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. That will bring us ahead, and ahead, we covered some items. Item 18, and that's consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Christopher Frank for the properties at 7101 and 7115 South Pennsylvania Avenue. Doug? Guard a little bit. Sorry about that. Oh. We all were, probably.
I had nine, 10, so we're good.
That is definitely the shortest SAP I've ever seen.
The workshop.
Thank you. This next item on the agenda is a CSM or Certified Survey Map for the properties at 7101 and 7115 South Pennsylvania Avenue. The CSM is actually a minor land division in the sense that it's actually combining two lots. This property is at the corner of Pennsylvania Avenue and Rossin Avenue, and the property is undergoing some, some changes in land use, which will be the subject of some additional review by the planning commission at a later date, but one of the requirements for that would be that these properties be consolidated into one property. That has been done. The property does meet the dimensional requirements of the B2 Community Business District and will continue to do so after consolidation. With that in mind, the commission has reviewed the proposed CSM and has recommended its approval.
Thank you, Doug. Questions, comments? Nothing? Okay. Motion on 18.
Kuzakowski, make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 12408-050223, a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Christopher Fink for the properties at 7101 and 7115 South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Lark, seconds. Hold call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lark?
Aye.
Ann, item 19 is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Greg and Gale Holtz and James and Sarah Nichols for the properties at 8801 South Charmaine Circle and 3381 East Carroll Court. Doug?
Thank you. This certified survey map is also a minor land division in the sense that no new lots are being created. This CSM will correct or adjust the lot line to reflect, oh, bit of backstory. I mean, between these two lots, you can see them highlighted on your screen, the current lot line does actually go through an accessory structure on one of the properties, and in an adjustment to that is being requested in concurrence with both landowners, and this CSM will actually do that. You can see that now that the, the, you can see on the screen in the red that the current property line does go through a corner of the garage. This new minor land division or certified survey map will correct it such that the, the garage is entirely on the property, Charmaine Circle. It still will be non-conforming in the sense that it does not meet the proper setbacks, but it's, it's really making the situation a lot better, so we don't have the actual physical encroachment across that property line. Plan commi- staff reviewed it, plan commission reviewed it, and they have also recommended their approval to the council. So with that in mind, the mo- the recommendation would be to approve the minor land division for the properties at 8101, 8801 South Charmaine Circle and 3381 East Carroll Court.
Questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Motion on 19.
Marshall will move to adopt Resolution Number 12410-050223, approving a certified survey map submitted by Greg and Gale Holtz and James and Sarah Nichols for the properties at 8801 South Charmaine Circle and 3381 East Carroll Court.
Kuzakowski, second.
Hold call.
Alderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lark?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Ann, item 20 is consideration of a resolution approving another certified survey map submitted by John Thompson Highgate LLC for the property at 1402 West Hampstead Lane.
Thank you. This CSM would re- would divide the existing outlot, which is that entire area that you see in the red dashes, into one outlot, I'm sorry, one lot, which would be for future development as well as retaining the remainder of the outlot, which could be further subdivided, in fact, could be further subdivided in the future. You can see that the CSM creates Lot 7 out of that, the remainder of Lot 8 would remain an outlot, and again, would be re-divided as development occurs, and that will hopefully be shortly, but Lot 7 does meet with the requirements of the PUD with respect to the setbacks, the dimensional requirements, and therefore, the planning commission upon its review is recommending approval of the CSM to the common council.
Questions for Doug? Steve?
Doug, do you know what the, what the developer intends to put on this property? Has he given you any, any ideas?
There have been a few ideas floated around recently. There is no current proposal for the property.
What are those ideas?
There's been a number of different retail, there's been, I think, there's been a car wash, it's been floated about there, but there currently is no pending application for development.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, motion?
Kuzakowski, make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 12411-050223, approving a certified survey map submitted by John Thompson Highgate LLC for the property at 1402 West Hampstead Lane.
Lark, seconds. Hold call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lark?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Ann, item 21 is consideration of motion to approve amendments to the Architectural and Engineering Design Service Contract for Abbot Shyne Park, Plunkett, Raycheck Architects for their stated services of $60,000. Doug?
Thanks. So in August of last year, construction bids for the Abbot Shyne Park Pavilion, AKA Beer Garden, came back, and we're unfortunately substantially over the budget that we had established in the CIP. And with that in mind, the council rejected those bids, and they directed staff to work with the architect to see if there were revisions to the design that could be made that would bring this more in line with the budget that we had at that point in time, while still preserving the, the function and the aesthetic of the plan, which we all, I believe, thought that was a very, a very positive, very, very good plan for that facility. Staff did do that, has worked with the architect to identify some cost savings in there, and just the, the bottom line as is proposed right now is, some of the changes that are being proposed would bring the proposed budget potentially down more in line with a range of a $2.5 million project, as opposed to the roughly $3.2 million budget that was in place before, which is even $1.3 million, less than the bid amount of $4.5 million. So, we'll talk about that in a little bit in the sense that, how there have been changes since this point in time when the, when this project was bid out that provides some challenges, but I just want to talk about how we got to that point. So some of the things that were, were handled or were redesigned, taken out of the scope were pretty, pretty obvious. The stage, the large outdoor stage would have been great, you know, it was an easy decision, I mean, if we needed to do that at a later date, we certainly could do that. The parking lot was omitted from this project. That's not really a cost savings in the sense that, you recall, the parking lot is being constructed this year, as a matter of fact, using some addition, some other funding mechanisms, so that it's still a cost, but it's just not part of this project. They also identified that parking lot lighting could be funded elsewhere, and I don't know if that's part of the, the design for what we're doing this year or not, but that's one area that they've identified, as well as some of the water main for fire protection that could be funded elsewhere and potentially in partnership with one of the adjacent developments. Some of the other site-related functions that were reduced were to omit some of the external food truck hookups, to omit, omit the fencing around the pond, to reduce the site concrete work that could be replaced with some other alternative materials or paving. We do some of the landscaping to code minimum, reducing the site lighting, and to simplifying that yard screening, which I, you know, as we, if we go into further design, we certainly look at all of these to see that the designs that were approved certainly met with the requirements of the planning commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and council. So, really, the way you achieve the cost savings is to make the building smaller. And you can see in, in the graphics on your screen that there was an overall reduction in the building from, and you've got the, kind of the, as it broken out by, by the areas, overall, it went from 7164 to 4611 square feet, more than a third reduction. And as we, as I looked at this with the architect, it was my charge that those reductions be focused on the back of house primarily. A lot of that, quite frankly, was driven by the requirements of a potential vendor for the, for a beer garden. As we move forward, if we move forward, we will still keep an eye towards possible use of that for, for a beer garden, but it's not going to be as vendor-specific, more than likely. It'll be a functional building that, that the city will develop, and any potential vendor would need to kind of conform and fit in with the program that the city put in place. So that was, I mean, we decreased the cooler size, we made the bathroom smaller, we actually eliminated a family bathroom. And we moved, there was an option to actually move the cooler outside of the building, which we really wouldn't need that big of a cooler for just a multi-use park structure or pavilion. There were some other, some structural ideas that would do some costs. They're all listed there. You know, I don't know that you need to get into those, but other than, but one big one is that there's a consideration to make this a three-seasons building instead of a year-round building, to have some major cost savings there as well. So what does this mean? Here is the project as bid, and I hope you can see that it's kind of washed out a little bit. But kind of the, what's labeled as the beer hall is 866, 866 square feet, excuse me. You can see that a lot of the building is the back of house. The two bathrooms, the family restroom was here someplace, as well as the mechanicals, the cooler, the prep, the concessions area, and seasonal storage. The new design reduces the hall area, the usable hall area, by about 100 square feet to about 775 square feet. Eliminates the family bathroom, eliminates one of the fixtures, each of the, both the women and men's bathroom. The seasonal storage area and the cooler and the prep areas are substantially smaller than they were before. The overhang, the area undercover, go up to the previous slide, you can see this kind of outline here. That was all undercover. Under the new proposal, that cover is reduced substantially to just extend beyond the, the structure to the west to allow for two or three tables worth there. And we're no longer extending that to cover the restroom areas. And just as a kind of a quick reference, you can kind of see the newly proposed floor plan in, that's outlined, you know, in the black with kind of the shading showing the footprint of the previous floor plan, that white blue, so you can tell it's quite a bit smaller. But having said that, the character of the building, you know, while, while changing, roughly, it does incorporate some of the same architectural styles as the original proposal, albeit smaller, albeit more cost-effective. Do we have, if you'll bear with me, I just have a few other slides which show, hopefully, some of the images of the new, newly proposed building, which would be considered for further design. Again, here is the, the new footprint. You can see the, the elevation looking from the southwest to northeast. It is very much the same aesthetic, although the building is smaller, and the area under roof is also smaller. Kind of going through some of the, the images, showing what the proposal would look like. And remember, the, these renderings were created not to the same level or degree that the, the previous renderings were, they were a lot more polished. So these were a lot more, a lot rougher, if you will, if I'll say so. I mean, I expect that should we proceed to redesign on this, that we'd have renderings which would be comparable to what we had originally.
Can I jump in if you don't mind?
You may.
Mayor? That's okay?
Go ahead.
We, we had, just to give a little more history, we have in our Aben Shyne Park master plan, which was adopted in 2019, we have a pavilion structure of some sort to satisfy the needs of this large community park. It's one of two community parks we have, Doug, so on that, as defined, large community park, this and Lake Vista. So it was contemplated back to the plan in 2019 that was adopted, that there would be some structure in generally this location. We had an opportunity, of course, as Doug had mentioned, for a partnership on a beer garden. That, I think, launched into, let's look back at that Aben Shyne Park master plan and see how those two concepts might merge. And although we rejected the bids in August of 2022, we probably began working on that initial design in fall of '21, I would say, maybe early fall. So if, if, fall of 2021. So while we had all of these ideas that wanted to be met, a lot of things, the bottom fell out of a lot of things. More work, work, materials shortages, everything started to cost 25, 35, 40% more than it had even six, nine months previous. So it was the confluence of these factors of trying to really strategize around, okay, we have this, this partnership opportunity. If we are doing that, and that's set aside for a long period of time in the summer, for the community's benefit, and for the costs that we would be putting into the building, we need to make this a functional four-seasons building. And with trying to add some specific elements that the potential partner would have required, and making this a versatile building to use four months out of the year, four seasons out of the year, along with the global conditions that we're all familiar with now, intervening in that process, it really led to, you know, this rethinking and restrategizing of this building. The question I think that's before the council tonight is, you know, do we want to spend the additional money on the design to this building? Do you like this building? Because once we identify funding, or this building, or a building, we would be ready to go and pull that plan off the shelf and execute on that. And also keep in mind that we did take a pause at the end of the budget of this year, the end of last, last year, excuse me, the budget leading into this year. We did take a pause. We have some time. We are re, we are expanding the parking lot, which was mentioned earlier. We're urbanizing and widening and making more utility with the entrance road to Aben Shyne Park. To have the ability to have an asset like this, to program it, and not have some of those other conditions and, and issues that we had with pop-up beer gardens or other large events.
One of the things that we were not working under the constraint of trying to open this up within a unrealistic timeframe, which we would have had to do, working on the schedule that we had. We were all accelerating a timeframe to open up probably this summer, which probably was, in retrospect, was never going to happen. And certainly with the supply chain issues that were out there, really would have increased the cost. We saw that when the bids came in, and, and we found that out in speaking with some of the bidders, as that was one of the factors why the bids were high. Because they had to really provide materials and labor and what have you within a timeframe which was expedited. We don't necessarily have that in this case.
There's no, I guess, we'll get it down to its brass tacks. There's nothing you need to do tonight. We are not on a timeline. We are not immediately moving to construction. We are looking to get a finalized bid, a finalized set of plans for a building similar to this one, if that's the building you like for that space. If not, we can regroup and, and, and take some time because we're not moving immediately to construction. Because as you know, in the meantime, this turned into a fire truck and a ladder truck, so, which is absolutely appropriate.
We'll note that this has been reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they reluctantly, I mean, they obviously want, as I think we all do, the, the plan that was laid out before us, and we're very excited about that. And I think they, they know that the decision, the go-no decision is not theirs. It rests with the council, with the appropriation of the necessary funding. But I think that they still value the, the utility of such a structure for this community park, and they actually have recommended that we move forward with this redesign.
Opening it up to council. Steve, you want to start us?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I wish we could have gone through with the first one. I mean, it was, it was kind of like a, with all the back and forth that we did on it, it was kind of like a Cadillac version, and then we just suffered from the, the global, the global issues that we had. And I took a, I took a look at the proposals here. I'm almost kind of happier with a smaller version here than the big one we had before because it just gives us some flexibility. I mean, just, just thinking real quick, if we really wanted to have a concert there, and we still have the land available, we could devise some sort of portable mechanism to bring in people and have a concert. So, you know, not having a stage is not such a big deal. My only concern, and I'll support doing this, but my only, I want to bring forth that this will be the original contract, the amendment one, amendment two. If we go through with amendment two, come to $272,800 that we've spent just trying to figure out if we, if we like what we, is presented to us. So while I would love to have the building constructed pursuant to the master plan, I'm reluctant to give it a third time because we're over one-quarter of a million dollars just trying to come up with something. And, and I just don't want to have a third, third round of another $60,000 to figure out if, if version three is going to work. So that's just my, my comments.
Thank you. Greg?
So with this proposal, is this, the list of omissions, is that a, is that a for-sure thing, or is that suggestions?
Well, those are suggestions. That's a palette that, I mean, if they were to go forward with the redesign, we wouldn't just say, here, redesign this. I mean, there's still going to be the same level of interaction with the staff and myself, and keeping in contact with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and ultimately the planning commission, to make sure that this is the building that they, that the city wants, that the city needs, and that we're not by, I think the big fear right is by taking away elements of the building that were diminishing the utility of it. And at some point, what, when does, when does, does it cease to become the building that we need for the community park, right? So that's, that'll be my task, is to make sure that the elements that remain in the building, the redesigned building, are things that make sense for the city and really provide value for the people that use that park.
So yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Alderman Krokowski. Definitely the size reduction is, is not a big issue to me. And looking at this list, a lot of this stuff does make sense to omit, to bring the costs down. While it does omit a large stage, I don't think that, as Alderman Krokowski said, I don't necessarily think a large stage is needed. But is there an option to put a smaller ground-level area with an electrical hookup, maybe for a small one or two-person type of musician to come in and play? Is there a possibility to look into maybe one or two food truck hookups? I don't know how many was in this that were omitted, but I think allowing food trucks to, to pull up and hook up in an area like this could be important. And then the, the last one would be the, the, the three seasons. I'm assuming that's, that's a huge savings, while it would be ideal to be able to use this year-round, knowing that it's such a nice building. If that is such a big cost savings, then, then I would be okay with that. But I would, I'd be interested in seeing if there's a possibility of some type of smaller stage option, and then the, the food truck hookups.
I think that those, those are certainly options, Alderman. And in fact, we, we did talk about the possibility, in all likelihood, the inclusion of a small area, which is more adjacent to the building, which would provide those connections for a small ensemble of folks. And this just wouldn't be the, the separate stage, which would have been at the other end, which would kind of bookended this, to provide for those, those bigger events. And with respect to the food trucks, I mean, food trucks can go anywhere by their nature, they're, they're mobile. This would have just been connections which would allow them to operate, you know, without having their generators. So regardless, I mean, food trucks can and, and will be a, a part of this park.
Okay. Thank you.
Some comments?
Yeah, being a rookie to this whole process, newbie, you know, it's pretty evident that there's a lot of questions and concerns people have across the board yet. Maybe it is time to pause and reflect rather than just, that's what I'm hearing, pretty much across the board.
What's the size difference between this and Lake Vista? Just off the top of your head, do you know?
The, the actual building area, which this would be a little smaller than Lake Vista.
Doug, I was, I asked the hall area, I think, roughly 28 by 28, or that kind of dimension? It came to 764, I think.
Can you go back to the floor plan?
Yeah, so it's close to 28 by 28. Yeah, I don't mind, I don't have, I'm fine with the size of the building. The one thing I think is, if we're going to redo this, is just make sure you think ahead in terms of stuff you want, just so you can do in the future. The electrical in the ground now, rather than the retro. Make sure, this building seems dark to me, just the way it's oriented versus where the sun is, that's kind of the picture that we're going to be using it, so.
And that was by design, and certainly it's, it's an interpretation of that, but it was first and foremost to provide a, a structure that provided shade from the southwest. That's why the, the building is oriented, the roof is oriented that way. And that's why the, if you can show the window, sure, if you can, there's a set of windows that provide some interior light, even though we do have that, the shade structure in the, the roof slanted to the south and southwest.
You're imagining as people use this, they're going to, but they're going to be picking tables and other stuff around this building?
Yes.
Best of it, I imagine, is going to be, I think it's, it's shown there in the proposal, it's probably a area to the west for, for staging groups of people.
So you can kind of see that, even though this is the area that's undercover, this would be an area that would be available to expand upon, you know, whatever event was taking place, it just wouldn't be undercover?
Yeah, that's all I'd say, is just make sure you're incrementally not going to crush the bank, make sure you plan ahead for stuff that we're going to likely want and need in the future, so.
Yes?
I, I wouldn't be opposed to changes as you've displayed, Doug. I think the only thing I would like to see more of is if we're going to be outside, if there's, the more we can have canopy out there, the better. Just, I know we're looking at cost here, but whatever we can do for the canopy, I think that creates the atmosphere for people to go and sit outside there. Gives a more opportunity to do that.
Agreed.
Yeah. Guess I'll weigh in as well, because I was a big fan of this. I actually really pushed for this quite a bit. I was really excited, and then when it came back at $4.5 million, not so much. Andrew summed it up, though. It kind of hit a perfect storm of building costs, labor, material shortage, you name it. Probably about the worst time to bid anything like this out. It was a beautiful building, and it did kind of take on a life of its own. We envisioned it kind of like a Lake Vista, kind of a three-season thing, primarily used to host our beer gardens, which have been very popular, and our pop-ups, and we can continue to just keep going at that route. So we thought maybe So we thought maybe try something different that other communities were successful at. Just didn't work out. I, myself, when it came to the year-round, let's rent out the room, wasn't too big of a fan of it, we have those ventures here in town, community center, home and suites, things like that, just to be perfectly honest with you. We have a room over there, we used to rent, we don't do anymore because the cost didn't make up for it. So I don't know how we thought we were really going to make a deal here. So I'm okay kind of with the size and the reduction it went on, but as Ken stated, put in the important stuff, what you're going to do, that infrastructure, if we are ever going to put in a stage, which we can do later on and make it work, bring the proper-sized service in, get the panel in, see if you can just add on and go that short distance. Don't chintz on the bathrooms. One thing we learned at Lake Vista, when the fireworks went down, there's bathrooms weren't good for the crowds that it attracted. So bathrooms are highly important, and I know we kind of scaled that back a little bit. Chris kind of brought up the canopies. Architecturally, I think this building, as Ken said, is a little dark, a little heavy compared to the other one, but we can, we can work on it. I mean, as Doug said, and Steve made a point, we're invested in a design, and Andrew said this design's on the shelf, we can always bring it off, dust it off, change trim on it, we can make it look differently, but we are this far. When the time is right, I think we put in what we, what we need, not so much what we So I think we still, as a group, not only here, but Park and Racks, everybody has to figure out what the primary purpose of this building serves as well. There was a playground attached to that, that can go in later as well. I still think it's viable, and we do need this amenity in the park without a doubt. So I commend everybody, I don't, I don't think this was a wasted effort or a waste of money by any way, shape, or form, because you're going to pay that engineering cost anyways, and I guarantee you, it ain't going to be cheaper in five years.
Yeah, I mean, to address that, and maybe Alderman Krokowski, I mean, and the mayor is correct, I mean, if we were to scrap this design and go something else, I mean, those costs would be additive as well. And in totality, A and E architectural engineering costs are ten to fifteen percent of a project's cost, which is, that's not out of line with what we expect the budget to be.
So I guess with that being said, there's a lot of things we can do with it, the timing just probably isn't there right now, but we never know, we could get back there. I think it's important we have the plan, and more importantly, we have the vision as to what's got to be there, so I don't know if the time's that important as much as the vision. Any other further comments? Okay, because we do have to call for a vote on this one.
Krokowski make him, are you ready for that?
Go, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Krokowski make a motion to approve amendments to the Architectural and Engineering Design Services Contract for the Aben Shain Park, to plunk it right as architects for their stated services fee of sixty thousand dollars.
Lorik seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzikowski.
Aye.
Krokowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
No.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item twenty-two is engineering, and it's consideration of a motion to authorize the engineering department to enter into a three-party design contract not to its, not to exceed one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars between the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, the City of Oak Creek, and Alfred Benish and Company for the design services of the South Sixth Street Bridge over Oak Creek. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor, Matt Sullivan, city engineer. Before you, we have consideration for motion to authorize the engineering department to enter into that contract. On February twentieth, the common council authorized us to enter into those negotiations with DOT and Alfred and Benish. We did come to an agreement on the one hundred and eight thousand dollars. Our state municipal agreement contract estimated amount was one hundred and seventy-two thousand, so we're significantly lower. That does save us approximately fourteen thousand on our end, which is twenty percent of that cost. So as we move forward, we're recommending that this be approved from council. In location of the bridge, that is the one that's just north of Drexel on South Sixth Street, near the entrance to the Little League complex, and this will be a superstructure replacement, which is just kind of removing the top portion of the bridge, keeping the abutments, fixing up the wing walls, and bringing this to standards, nowadays standards. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Questions for Matt. Matt, we'll, just very quickly, will Sixth, Sixth Street be closed as a through-strader? Will they do one side of the bridge?
We'll be working through those as options when we get into through design, but that is an option to do one side versus the other.
Thank you. Okay, no further questions, motion please.
Krokowski make a motion to authorize the engineering department to enter into a three-party design contract not to exceed one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars between the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, City of Oak Creek, and Alfred Benish and Company for the design services of the South Sixth Street Bridge over Oak Creek.
Lorik seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Krokowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Krokowski.
Aye.
And item twenty-four is our vendor summary report for April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, in the amount of four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred, seventy-four dollars and forty-one cents, so please take a look at all the items listed, and if you have any questions, please feel free to take the floor. Satisfied, there's no discussions or questions, motion?
Marshall will move to approve the April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three vendor summary report in the amount of four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-one.
Krokowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Krokowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
And that will get us to adjournment, so.
Ritz will motion to adjourn.
Lorik seconds. Do have a second somewhere in there, and they'll figure it out in minutes. Roll call.
Alderman, Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Krokowski.
Aye.
Krokowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
And that will get us to adjournment, so.
Ritz will motion to adjourn.
Lorik seconds. Do have a second somewhere in there, and they'll figure it out in a minute. Roll call.
Alderman, Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Krokowski.
Aye.
Krokowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all.